And now with our nineteen schools, whether they're partially accredited or not, I think he has done a tremendous job. Now that brings me to my reasons for why I'm here, and I know come to school board meetings anymore for two reasons. One, I think y'all changed cooks, and then two, Board Member Lam is no longer here, so I think you all in good hands. But anyway, I would that Ms. Duran and Dr. Simmons would show me a little grace tonight while I'm here. Dr. Simmons had worked with me tremendously, so I wanted to share with you all that the City Council meeting the other night was very disturbing. And I want to just say to our Board Member that I know all of you all that they're support Dr. Bracy one hundred percent. I'm here tonight to say that we need you all to do a better job, just a little bit better job at relaying that because our faculty and staff, they believe in our school board, they listen to you guys, and I don't expect you all to do a Barry Randall and be me and how I do delivery. As I said, Dr. Simmons worked with me greatly, so he would be proud. But on another note, we have to understand, guys, that a lot of our faculty and staff, they don't know what you all know. They don't know what information that some of us know. All they know is why is our mayor running and why is Lisa running? What are y'all doing? Like, everybody's so nice, we like them both. And it boggles my mind because we say that we're pro Dr. Bracy. If we're pro Dr. Bracy and we're pro public education, Dr. Bracy had no idea that I would be here tonight, so don't be looking to see if he had me to come down here. But if we're so pro Dr. Bracy and we're so pro public education, then why aren't we being vocal to our faculty and staff about the truth? You all know that Shannon Glover is not pro public education, and they need to hear it from you all. That's why when you go on social media and you look at Churchill Elementary and different stuff, and he's in pictures and the teachers are hooked up with him and they smiling, they don't know any better. All they know is that this man, if you all look at the council meeting, he said to all that PEA staff that came in there, "Why are you all still talking? Like, you all don't have to talk." He said, "Go look at the tape." He said, "I've been here for six years, and everything Dr. Bracy has ever asked for, I have given." That is what he said. He said, "Everybody on this diet is going to vote to give it to you all." You all are fussing at the wrong body. You all need to take this anger back to your school board member. It's their job to do this. We already was gonna do this. So you all need to make it known, we have six locales that already automatically reappropriate the monies back. Our city manager has even admitted off record that where he's from, back in Georgia, that it automatic goes back to the school division at the end of the school year. So why are we playing games? And if you look at the early part, if it wasn't for Dr. Whitaker asking people to show a consensus of who was gonna vote for, you wouldn't be able to, Dr. Bracy wouldn't be able to send that email out tomorrow. So what I'm just saying, guys, going forward, we just need to hear from you all just a little bit. You don't have to be me, okay? But you can be yourselves and tell the people the truth, because according to the scriptures, the truth will do what? Make us free. I gotta get back to High Street. God bless y'all. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, doing a tremendous job, turning water into wine next, and brother, you'll be the savior. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carruthers? Mr. Carruthers? I don't think he showed up. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How you doing? Thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity to speak. This is my daughter, Kareema Smith. The reason we're here tonight is I have a serious concern with the dual enrollment program for Portsmouth Public Schools, specifically for Manor High School. My daughter's taking a class, so I'll let you give her perspective. But she signed up for a virtual class, which involves a teacher teaching the class each and every day virtually. Long story short, that isn't happening, hasn't happened, so I'll let her give you her perspective on the class.
Good evening. My name is Kareema Smith, and I am a senior at Manor High School. And I am taking the dual enrollment English course offered through TCC. Upon receiving information for the class, I was told that the class would be virtual. I assumed that the class would be taught virtually through Zoom. I came to realize that the class will be self-taught. With the instructor, I am able to contact her through email and text in which the instructor does not always respond back in a timely manner. We do have an assistant teacher that comes in on Mondays only and assists us with the assignments we may have at the time. If I were to have a question or comment on an assignment given, I would have to wait for our instructor or our assistant to respond back through email. The instructor also provides little to no feedback when she is grading assignments that could help us in the future, with future assignments to improve our grades. So far, she has only graded three to five assignments for myself and about the same amount from other students in my class, which will not help me boost my grade, considering that it is the last nine weeks. It is important that I maintain and upkeep my GPA in my last year of high school, entering college in the fall of next year. I appreciate that you have taken the time to consider my opinion. Thank you.
Now, for some additional information. For some additional information. A virtual class is taught every single day by one teacher. We're nine weeks until the school year. She's never seen her teacher. Someone comes, so the teacher's at TCC. On Mondays, I guess the school has, what is the young lady's name that comes? I guess it's somebody from Portsmouth Public Schools that shows up at Manor High School, only on a Monday. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the kids are self-taught. We all know that's not a way to learn. This young lady is, this is an honest student. She's attended governor's school for four years, so this is not a student that's struggling in the classroom. No class should be taught with no teacher. However, this same teacher is getting paid on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. That's appalling, absolutely appalling. And what's really frustrating from a parent's perspective, there's no transparency. The school, Portsmouth Public Schools, Tywhorter Community College, knew about this situation before school started in August. They didn't send a letter out, no communication, because if I, as a parent, if I would have known that, it would have given me the opportunity to have my daughter not take the class or not. This is a college-level class. She's preparing to write papers, things of that sort. And we went down the communication protocols. We contacted the principal, and I applaud her because I didn't know. She sent a, September the twenty-fourth, she sent an email to all the school board members, except Dr. Cotton and except Dr. Bracy. And then throw anybody under the bus, but at that point, it was for awareness. That's all it was. So my wife and I found out. So again, I spoke to the liaison person for Portsmouth Public Schools. I had a phone call with her. And again, I wasn't, it wasn't satisfied. Because again, when we talk as adults, we can understand if some information given to us is not the right information. So again, I let that, I just wanted to see what happened. So that was probably a week after she sent the email to the school board members. I in turn followed up with, I believe it was your assistant, Dr. Bracy, and just voiced my concerns to her. Again, it was for awareness. Not that we expected any feedback from the school board members, but now we're nine weeks into the year. And for, we even reached out to the top, to the deans at Tywhorter Community College and forced to be given the information saying we're working on it. We know that's not, they're not doing anything. So again, these kids are teaching themselves. In college, they don't do that. You don't have a virtual class with no teacher. That's appalling. So again, my daughter's pretty smart, but again, we're not talking just, we're talking to all the kids at Manor. Similar things are happening at the other Portsmouth Public Schools. But again, it's unfair. It's untreated to these kids. As adults, as administrators, we talk about accountability. We talk about transparency. The adults in that educational process need to be protecting these kids. Nothing's been done. They knew about the situation before the school semester started in August. But again, you don't have to wait for a parent to complain to resolve an issue that you know is already there. And again, like I said, nothing's been done. And be honest, nothing's going to be done from an administrative standpoint for this semester. But again, you know, these kids have three grades out of twenty assignments. Appalling. So when these progress reports came out, the visibility that I have, I don't get a chance to see what my daughter may be having concerns with. I don't, there's not even a grade being issued for progress reports. Appalling, unacceptable. But again, the adults, the administrators knew about it. They know about it. But again, it's, be honest, it's been swept under the rug. It's been swept under the rugs. When we have jobs, we have evaluations. Everybody in this loophole that's responsible, that knows about it, they fail, from my perspective. My daughter shouldn't have to go to a different teacher to learn the subject matter. She shouldn't have to go to a different English teacher to ask questions. But this teacher that's supposedly teaching the class, she still isn't grading the work. You know, she still isn't responding. When the syllabus says, "I'll respond to your question within twenty-four hours," we sent her email over a month ago, as parents, as a student. It's still been unanswered, unacceptable. How can you hold a kid to a certain standard and then you're still steadily giving out assignments each and every day, but as a student have a question, they can't email you? Know why? Because the assignment is due at twelve o'clock, but you don't respond? Or you respond days or weeks later. Unacceptable, unacceptable. Every kid, in my opinion, should receive an A. Every kid, because this is unfair. You know, so from a parent's perspective, you know, it's appalling. It really is.
And I just want to start, Mrs. Smith, and apologize for the lack of communication. We did receive her email, and when we received emails from students, we forwarded them on to staff. And I do apologize about that. I also want to thank you for coming and being brave enough to come to speak before the board and voice your concerns as a student, because it not only impacts you, but also other students in your class. So thank you for being brave enough to do that. What I want to ask now, Dr. Smith, I mean, Mr. Smith, that Dr. Bracy will have his information forwarded so you can deal with this tomorrow. And I'm sure he's gonna contact you. But if you do have any other questions that you need to correspond with school board members, you're always welcome to do so as a parent as well. And you can get responses back from us as a parent and adult if you email us as well. But Dr. Bracy's staff will speak with you ASAP to get this resolved for you.
Okay, definitely.
Dr. Portillo, we both had questions.
Ms. Tom, Dr. Whittaker first.
Yes, thank you both for coming and voicing your concerns about this issue. You mentioned that there was something that was known in August. What was that? Just for clarification.
Well, I'm thinking the school had to know in August, because what happened was she ended up changing her class a week later because she was in a different class and then realized that this class would be more beneficial to her. So she got into the class, I believe, the beginning of September. But again, at that point, they still didn't have a virtual teacher, as far as teaching the class. So I'm saying, I think school members, administrators knew at the beginning of August, I'm sorry, when school started at the end of August, there was not a virtual teacher. And to my, to the best of my knowledge, you haven't had one day that was virtual, correct? So she doesn't know who her teacher, she hasn't physically seen her teacher at all. So my point is that they knew about it, so it should have been, and that's us, because school started at the end of August.
Okay.
I'm just, the benefit of the doubt, either they knew about it then, or they knew about it before then, where they could have resolved the issue. And it wasn't, no transparency. And the only reason we found out was because we went to the Manor's open house. And we spoke to the other teacher that, she's not, she's not a teacher. I think she just stands in the class to make sure it's no commotion, but that's how we found out. And as a parent, that's when I, it was brought to my attention and I started to make the phone calls and/or the emails. So that's what I'm saying. I think the members knew, school members knew that this virtual teacher was not going to be there on the first day of class.
And is this a TCC professor?
Right, yeah, so we've even emailed it, yes, a TCC professor. So like I said, we've even emailed the dean of the English department at TCC also. And then, like I said, I spoke to the liaison for Portsmouth Public Schools. So we've been trying to, you know, hopefully send it out as a sense of awareness, thinking it would get resolved.
Right.
And it just had.
Yeah, I think, well, I think we need to be reimbursed for the class because as a college professor, I can't, you know, not show up and teach classes and expect to be paid for the class. I mean, or, you know, not answer emails. You know, that's, that's an abuse of using our money if you're not gonna have a teacher.
Yeah, and these assignments have been coming through the loop, you know, college level is just different. So a high school student is different if you graduated, you know? But the high school, the college environment can be fast-paced. But to experience, to throw that on a student in high school and don't even give them the proper tools to set them up for success is not correct. Because if everybody had a child, you know how you would react if you found that your child was going through this. So that's why we came to just put it out there. Not that she's gonna be fine, but again, for those other students, or just for the students that are in their class that weren't bold enough to send an email or what have you. You know, I applaud her on that, but some kids in their class are struggling. They're struggling. And then the teachers are gonna wanna hold them accountable for a certain grade. Gonna have a problem with the parents.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, again, I hate that you had to come down here for this. I do remember your email was very thorough, very detailed. You didn't only stick up for yourself, but you stuck up for the other students that are also doing that. And although we didn't respond to you, we have followed up with staff to make sure that, to see how that's going, to see if there's some resolve there. But I want to go back on when the fact that this is a TCC dual enrollment class. I don't know what our, I'm very happy that we have that relationship, but this is not the first time that the structure or support hasn't been there. And although it is a college course, we do have our high school students taking college courses. And sometimes, I'm speaking as a parent myself, just seeing the support or communication there. You know, as a parent, you can't even get communication from the TCC professor without additional loopholes to get that communication if you're trying to advocate for your student, who technically isn't a college student, but they're taking college courses. And so I think if, from this, I hate that you had to go through this, but if something can come out where we can make our relationship and that communication better between Portsmouth Public Schools and TCC, that needs to be stated because you're unfortunately not the first student to maybe go through this virtual and not having any stu, and not having any teacher. But there has been other instances where I think we need to improve how the TCC college interacts with some of our students and that support. Because I've seen it other, you know, in other instances too. So however we can resolve the issue and what's going on with the students in this course, I'm not sure. I'll leave that to the staff. But I do think this brings out a broader issue of the support that, at the college level, our students also have. Because just from personal issues and other instances I've heard over the summer, with summer classes, lack of communication. And even though, I don't know how you got in touch with the TCC people, but I know that they're very strict about communicating, even with parents, about what their students are dealing with. So outside from So outside from you speaking up, I think that opens a broader conversation that we need to have as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Chair.
Oh, sorry, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And again, thank you both for coming. I think I I want to piggyback on what Dr. Whitaker said as far as, you know, Dr. Bracy's saying if we can get reimbursed for the course, not just for yourself, but all the students. I feel like we need to be reimbursed for that that whole semester. And I and I will also ask if Dr. Bracy can email the board members on what the plan is, if this course is going to be a second semester course, what that plan is, is it going to be virtual, is it going to be handled differently? So I would like, Dr. Bracy, if you can email us that that second semester plan, just to follow up with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Have a nice night.
When our students take a course, when do we know? Does TCC inform us if they don't have a professor for that course? When when do we get informed of that? Or is it just this like, how does that happen? Is the student? Is that something we're out of the process and they just handle completely?
Yeah, so for it depends on the course. For dual enrollment, English, we generally have certified teachers in our buildings that have that they have to meet a certain requirement to be able to qualify to teach dual enrollment English, and in that case, we offer it right inside the buildings in person. At Manor, unfortunately, this year, we did not have that. And so we part we reached out to TCC to see if they'd be able to support us with that so that we could still offer it at Manor. And and that was the the solution that they came up with.
Evening, School Board. First, I want to commend the Portsmouth Public Schools in what they are doing academically. I can see from last meeting to this meeting, the schools are doing a tremendous job with the students, and that definitely needs to be applauded. Secondly, I want to say that I'm coming out of Simonsdale Elementary School, where my student attends. So first, I want to thank you for giving my family the opportunity to address you all for the second time now regarding the issue of the school bus transportation, or should I rather say there the lack thereof. At the beginning of the school year, we, as parents, agreed to certain terms with the school to adhere to fairly strict rules and guidelines set forth by the school and by the state regarding attendance of our students. If these are not adhered to, we, as parents, face criminal punishments such as fines or even jail time. Given this information, Portsmouth Public School Transportation Department has not been holding up their end of the bargain in providing adequate transportation for my child, as well as other child children in the neighborhood to and from school. The mission of the above stated department, which is an entity under the Portsmouth Public Schools, in other words, your responsibility to ensure they are doing their job, is the Department of Transportation is dedicated to enhancing the learning experience of every student by providing professional, courteous, safe, and on time service, while continuing to provide exceptional customer service to parents, staff, and our community. As per our documentation, which I printed out here with me today, in the now 42 days of school, my daughter's bus has failed to show up in a reasonable amount of time, both in the morning and in the afternoon, at least 28 days. This equates to 61% of the school year, the the board and the Transportation Department have entirely failed my child failed my child and other children to ride the bus. Of the eight days my daughter has ridden the bus, which is 19% of the school year, the bus has been egregiously late 30 minutes to 1 hour and 20 minutes from the designated drop off or pickup time, with no notification from the school, the Transportation Department, or anyone for that matter. So for up to an hour or even longer on those eight days, we had no idea where our seven year old daughter was, and neither the school or the Transportation Department would give us any answers when we called, other than it's on its way or you need to be patient. Would any of you, except not knowing where your seven year old child is, when you were entrusting a school district to provide the required transportation? In the morning on nearly a daily basis, my wife has had to drive my daughter to school when the bus has not shown up by 08:25, which is 25 minutes after the designated time. Routinely, the bus is picking up students on our street at after 08:50. Keep in mind, breakfast ends at 08:50, and instruction is scheduled to begin at 08:55. With that being said, you've been anything but what your mission statement claims. As previously stated, this has been an ongoing issue, and my wife has addressed this in the previous board meeting in September of 2024. However, it seems to have either fallen on deaf ears, or you, as the board, and the Transportation Department are too incompetent to carry out your duties adequately. I've never in my life seen such a failure of a system with such excuses as we have received. The Fire Department and the military, if nothing else, has taught me a lot about accountability, which you all seem to have no grasp or comprehension of, as I have heard from other parents and previous school employees, that this is an ongoing issue year after year, especially for my neighborhood. Furthermore, I have noticed that there is more than one bus that comes to my daughters from my daughter's school through my neighborhood, which is a complete waste of resources, when a completely different bus has to complete their route before coming back to get the students that ride bus 282. Although the district may have sovereign immunity for most things, and the state has not written laws requiring the school district to provide transportation, it does not protect from litigation for negligence and failing to provide reasonable alternative alternatives leading to attendance issues. I am fully prepared to continue documenting the failure and have begun contacting attorneys to begin building the legal case against the district and the Transportation Department. Living 1.4 miles from the school gives absolutely no excuse for why my daughter isn't home at the prescribed drop off or pickup time, allowing for for a reasonable 10 five to 10 minute window for error or delay. I suggest the board and the Transportation Department heed these words, as they do not come as empty threats, and gain a sense of accountability for your district. Signed, Electronics Technician Petty Officer Third Class, Ricky Coach, United States Navy.
Board members have anything? Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to follow up. I think he made a comment about not being able to track his child. I know we do have like the bus tracker app that is functioning right now, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, Ms. Atkinson, we have tried using the app, and the app has given us nothing but issues and inaccuracies. We've contacted the Transportation Department about this before several different times. We get no answers for them, nothing but excuses. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Coach, the superintendent stated he will get someone personally to reach out to you tomorrow from the Transportation Department. Thank you, sir. You have you have his information already? Okay, all right.
I have a question. One question.
Ms. Thomas.
Just a question. I know in the beginning of the school year, we corrected, we had like the issue with parents calling and getting in touch with transportation, but we've fixed that, correct, with the person dedicated to, I think I heard him say that he, when he tried to call transportation, he said sometimes you would get no answer.
Yes, ma'am. So it wasn't that they weren't answering the phone, it's that they weren't providing us any answers.
Okay, all right, but we've, okay, so we do have someone to answer, it's just the information was lacking, but you're going to follow.
We get nothing but attitude and no answers or no explanation as to what's going on. They can't provide any clarification, just that they don't know why the bus is later, why it's not there.
Okay. This this is, thank you, sir. Something that I just want to throw out there, we can't implement it now, but just for a later idea, I know that that's always a big issue. If we could look into, I've just seen this helps sometimes when we are overwhelmed, there's short personnel too, like if the tracker app doesn't work, but even if we have somewhere that like people can do a quick chat, a quick text or something to get an update, if we can look into some type of solutions for the following or later school year. Because I think our transportation has been overwhelmed a bit with just some of the calls and concerns, and I have been thinking about this since we've been getting some insights at the beginning of the school year, as a possible solution for a following school year or something.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Agenda item 7.1 is consideration of a resolution recognizing American Education Week, November 18 through to 22, 2024. Dr. Bracy. Uh, Dr. White.
Good evening, School Board Chair Portillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, and Dr. Bracy. Our resolution today, whereas an advocate for children, we work to provide opportunities for them to acquire the skills and knowledge required for life, and whereas the Portsmouth City School Board is maintaining our school's roles in a place where we discover innovation, and our board is committed to ensuring that our graduates have marketable skills, and whereas the professional faculty has a duty to provide a complete and competitive education for all students, and whereas by Presidential Proclamation 5403, our nation will pause once again for the annual observation of American Education Week, November 18 through to 22, 2024, with the year's theme, Together for Safe, Just, and Equitable Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City Public Schools School Board reaffirms a commitment to public education and recognize that everyone shares the responsibility for providing high quality education for our children, and be it further resolved that the Portsmouth local government and citizens be called upon to continue their support of quality education for every student, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be archived as part of the Portsmouth Public Schools Board official records.
Thank you so much. I entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Ms. Boone, second by Ms. Futreal. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Futreal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Portillo?
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda items 8.1 to 8.3 is consent agenda. I entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Ms. Boone, second by Ms. Futreal. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz? Yes.
Ms. Futreal?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Heinz? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Portillo?
Yes.
Issue unanimous.
Thank you. Agenda item 9.1 is under student discipline, consideration of readmission, case number 2024 slash 2501. Ms. Heinz, you have a motion for us at this time.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Would like to adjust it for 9.1 to reconsideration of a readmission case to an alternative placement.
You have a motion by Ms. Heinz, a second by Ms. Futreal. So any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson? Yes. Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Futreal? Yes. Ms. Heinz? Yes. Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Portillo?
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item 10.1 is a monthly report curriculum instruction. Dr. De Vries.
Good evening, School Board Chair Portillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, and Dr. Bracy. You have your highlights in your packet for our most recent events within the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. Today, we're going to highlight for you all the happenings within our Special Education and Related Services office. Ms. Pamela Battle Hardy, who's the Director of Special Education and Related Services, and her special guests will now present to you.
Good evening, Chairman Portillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, and esteemed members of the School Board. The General Assembly officially recognized October as Disability History and Awareness Month. This initiative fosters positive attitudes in schools and promotes a culture of respect, understanding, and equal opportunities for everyone. As educators and community stakeholders, we have a responsibility to eliminate barriers for individuals with disabilities in employment, healthcare, education, and community living. I am proud to share that the Office of Special Education and Related Services promotes inclusive practices from pre-K through post-secondary education through the age of 22. Benjamin Franklin once said, "Tell me, I may forget; teach me, I may remember; involve me, and I will learn." For the past 30 years, Portsmouth Public Schools has collaborated with the Department of Aging and Rehabilitation Services. Last year, we launched a pilot program called the Bloom's Consulting Program. Bloom's mission is where every student's ability is an opportunity to bloom. This program supports high school students by focusing on career readiness and college preparation. Students learn essential skills such as resume writing, attire, interview attire, self-awareness, pre-employment skills, and relationship building. Currently, we have 64 students from Portsmouth Public Schools enrolled in this program. Tonight, I have two very special guests. I have Mrs. Denise Whitley, Special Education Teacher from Churchland High School. And I also have a former graduate, Mrs. Gabrielle, AKA Gabby McLean. We would like to share a short clip highlighting Bloom's program.
You might want to make double money. All right, good, I like that. So we're going to help you with getting the skills needed to maintain and keep it up. We already know who wants to be independent.
Bloom Transitional Services works for our students with disabilities from the age of 14 to 22. They build on their skills for independent living. They also work on their skills for pre-employment skills, such as whatever they want to do after graduation, even with a vocational skill. They work on interviews, and they work on how to maintain and retain their employment once they get it. With implementing Bloom, it helps them to build a foundation so that we feel that they have more normalcy when it comes to leaving the school environment and be able to get on their own and be independent.
In the Bloom program, I'm around to get a job. My most excited thing to see in my future every day is working.
One of our former students, Gabby, is waiting for employment at a daycare. Before Gabby left, Gabby had already obtained two different interviews at two different fast food restaurants that she had never done before. She had created her own email, so she knows how to daily look for emails, and she does interviews. With interviews, we do mock interviews, and first we go through training, and they work with the teacher, or they work with the Bloom's representative back and forth, having a conversation so they mo we model it and let them see what it looks like. And then we start to practice back and forth and tell them, show them how to dress, and have them to model how to dress as well. The students that have graduated and still are coming back, they love it because they can continue in the Bloom program, and also they love it because they can go to camps. They go to the mall, they go to restaurants, they go to the banks, they go to places where what their daily routine may require them to go and be able to have a positive relationship outside of their peers.
In the Bloom program, I learned life skills, transition skills, independence, and job skills.
The current student that we have here in Bloom is Rhea, is currently looking for a position, part-time after school, and she's working on getting her learner's permit. The feedback I've gotten from mainly the the parents, when I told them that all of our students were going to be enrolled into the Bloom, they were excited to know that they're going to have an opportunity, and this is a great opportunity, for them to build and have skills, and how we work hand in hand to make sure the students are prepared once they leave here, and they just can't wait for the next step. Thank you. I think she's kind of nervous, just in case if y'all had any questions for her, but she's ready.
It 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 looks like Gabby was a star of that video. That's what I saw. Thank you so much for presenting tonight. Do we have board members, you have any comments or questions at all? Oh, Ms. Futreal?
Thank you, Chair. Gabby, hey, girl. So you want to work at daycare? Not anymore? So what do you want to do? You don't know? You going to let us know?
I'm staying home.
Okay, stay at home, okay. Well, we all want to do that.
She's still nervous.
Okay, we'll talk later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 10.2, VSBA Academy Awards for School Board Members, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair. This part of the agenda is where we, uh, recognize board members for their service and professional learning that they do as board members, and it's called the VSBA Academy Awards. And each board member is given a certificate based on their level of participation. So I have a list that I will share with you for each, and I will provide each board member that receives this award their own certificate. I will first read you what each certificate says, and then I will let you know the level of each board member. So the certificates read Virginia School Boards Association, and it's whatever your level of recognition is, and it's awarded to that board member for their commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the VSBA School Board Academy for the years twenty twenty-two through twenty-four. And it's signed by ironically our own board chair, who's the VSBA President, Cardell Patillo, and Gina Patterson, the Executive Director for the School Boards Association. And with that, uh, the first one is, is Ms. Lakeisha Clu Atkinson, who will receive an Award of Recognition. Dr. Melvin Cotton Junior, Award of Distinction. Ms. Cordnea D. Futreal, Award of Excellence. Ms. Irene Boone, Award of Excellence. Dr. Cardell C. Patillo Junior, Award of Distinction. Mrs. Tamara Schumake, Award of Achievement. Ms. Yolanda Thomas, Award of Excellence. And yours truly, Award of Excellence. So congratulations to each of you board members that attained the status. Uh, just give yourselves a round of applause. And at this time, I will, uh, pass out your certificates. And you also have a pen that goes along with it.
Thank you so much, sir. Agenda item eleven point one is the monthly report from our Superintendent, Dr. Bracy.
All right, thank you, sir. Again, um, good evening, everyone. I wanna begin my remarks by thanking the Portsmouth School Foundation for an incredible State of the Schools breakfast, uh, last week. With more than two hundred people in attendance, we were able to share some of the important work that's going on in our division and some of our wonderful achievements. Thank you to all of our event sponsors and volunteers who helped make this event a great success. We're looking forward to more partnerships in the future. Last week, we had back-to-back amazing experiences taking place. Last Thursday morning, sixth graders from all of our elementary schools took part in Naval Station Norfolk Fleet Fest STEM Day. As part of STEM Day, students toured Navy ships, saw aircraft displays, and participated in more than forty-five science, technology, engineering, and mathematics exhibits. Special thanks to the elementary science team in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, and of course, to Naval Station Norfolk. You can see a full recap video on this exciting day on all of our division's social media channels. If that was not enough, Portsmouth own Missy Elliott had an extra special surprise for our students at Douglas Park Elementary School that same day. She gifted every student at the school a new pair of Nike shoes, as well as six pairs of Nike socks as part of the celebration of Missy Elliott Day here in Portsmouth. Now, when the students found out that they were getting shoes and socks, they were excited. Now, you all don't have any excitement about that. But I was there in person, um, Ms. Atkinson was as well, and I think my ears are still ringing from the scream of joys that, that those students displayed once they found out that what was going on. We wanna thank Missy, uh, for her support of our schools, and also Douglas Park Administrative Team for making that a very special ceremony. Coming up this month, there's more excitement. I'm happy to share that we're hosting our first-ever Division-wide College Fair at Churchland High School on Monday, October twenty-eighth. At last count, we will have more than sixty colleges and universities in attendance. Students from other high school campuses will be bussed in, so schools can participate, and students will have an opportunity to meet with college representatives and learn more about what their futures might hold. Finally, I have one more calendar reminder. Wednesday, October thirtieth, is a professional learning day for staff members, so it will be an adjusted dismissal day for all students. Families can always access the early release schedule on the school's hours page, school hours page on our website. Thank you, Chairman Patello. That completes my report.
Thanks so much, sir. And do we have any other comments or concerns from board members at this time? And just a reminder that Dr. Bracy and his staff will be sending, uh, information out tomorrow to all staff in reference to their retention bonuses and when those will be released, so, uh, that will be done on tomorrow. All right, do you have other comments and concerns? Thank you all for coming. This meeting's now adjourned.